Commissioner Arment?
Here.
Commissioner Earl?
Here.
Chair, you have a quorum.
Thank you. Next, um, this is a reading of Longmont's land acknowledgement, which is an honor to present, and it's, I think, with gratitude that it exists, and hopefully with respect that it is heard by others. So, um, the Longmont Land Acknowledgement states that we acknowledge that the city of Longmont sits on the traditional territories of the nations of the Cheyenne, Rappahoe, Ute, and other indigenous peoples. We endeavor to honor the history and the living and spiritual connection of these first peoples with this land. We commit to face the injustices that happened when these lands were taken, to educate our communities, ourselves, and our children to ensure that these injustices do not happen again. Next, um, is Communications. Plan Director Penlin, Attorney Terrell, other members of the commission, anything to present?
Nothing for me, other than happy March.
Good evening, Chair Height and members of the commission. Nothing for me. Happy to see you all after a couple of months off, at least from the city attorney's office.
Great. Anything more? Moving along, um, this is a public hearing. Um, the public is invited to be heard prior to our opening of, um, public hearings, of the actual public hearings. There's a sign up list. I don't see anybody on the sign up list. If there's anybody in the audience that would like to speak on items that are not scheduled for our public hearing, um, or items that are not likely to be on our scheduled public hearings in the next, in the foreseeable future, please come up and speak. Seeing none, I will move forward to, um, approval of the minutes of the February 19th, 2025, um, meeting of the Planning and Zoning Commission. Has everyone reviewed them? Any comments, any motions? I'm sorry, see, as Commissioner Boone?
I'm here to approve the meeting minutes of February 19th, 2025.
Great. As there are second?
Second.
Having a second, um, we'll have a vote. Recording Secretary Madrid if you call a vote.
Commissioner Boone?
Hi.
Commissioner Poland?
Yes.
Chair Height?
Aye.
Commissioner Arment?
Aye.
Commissioner Earl?
Yes.
Chair, that passes five to zero.
Thank you very much. Our next agenda item are two public hearings. Um, tonight, we are, we're not sitting as, but we are sitting and hearing two matters, um, that normally appear before the Board of Adjustments. There are variances under sections 1502, 060i of the Development Code. Um, the Board of Adjustment, um, is not seated, or I don't even know if it's, um, formed, but pursuant to statute or pursuant to, um, city ordinance, we sit in its stead, um, to hear these two matters. It's a public hearing. It's quasi judicial. It follows more or less the same format where we accept evidence, um, and apply this, the city code to the matters before us. Um, our decisions are defensible if they're based on fact, um, if there's fact in the record that supports them, um, and they're not totally, um, unquestioned under law. That's how all of our decisions are to be reviewed, um, and I just note that for the record. That said, um, I believe that the first matter before us is 1445 Sunset Street. Um, I don't know if I know the, the agenda item. I'm sorry, um, I'll call it up. Yeah, it's 1445, uh, Sunset Street, um, fence variance. Um, uh, Senior Planner Christine Cody is going to present, um, the matter to us to start with.
Good evening and thank you Chair Height and fellow board members. I am Kristin Cody, a senior planner with Planning and Development Services. This evening I am presenting the variance request for the Yoder property located at 1445 Sunset Street. This request pertains to an existing front yard fence that exceeds the city's height restrictions. The property is located at 1445 Sunset Street, is approximately point one nine of an acre, or eight thousand two hundred and seventy-six square feet. It is part of the Stro Heights subdivision and is currently zoned residential single family. Envision Longmont also identifies this area as a single family neighborhood. The homeowners have requested a variance to allow their front yard fence to remain as built according to section 15 dot O five dot one hundred dot G of the City of Longmont's Development Code. Front yard fences must be no taller than forty-two inches in height and at least fifty percent transparent. The existing fence constructed with cedar and welded wire exceeds the height restriction by two and a half feet. The applicant has included the welded wire and spaced the planks as to comply with transparency allowances. If approved, this variance would allow the fence to remain at its current height while continuing to comply with the transparency standards. Here you can see the existing fence in question. The images provide a visual representation of its materials and height. This slide gives you a better overall view of the fence. Public notice has been given in accordance with Longmont Development Code, and public comments have been received in reference to this application, which the board should have before them this evening. Before we move into the specific variance criteria, it's important to review the general criteria that all development applications must meet. These include: Consistency with the comprehensive plan, compliance with city standards, compatibility with surrounding properties in terms of land use and design, no significant adverse effects on surrounding properties or city infrastructure, compliance with sustainability requirements if applicable, and an appropriate transportation plan if applicable. Now for the specific variance criteria outlined in section 1502 dot zero six zero dot i dot five dot a dot Roman numeral two of Longmont Development Code, the following factors are considered when determining practical difficulty: whether the property can have a beneficial use without the variance, the degree to which the variance deviates from the standard, whether the applicant was aware of the standard when purchasing the property, whether alternative solutions exist aside from granting a variance, and whether the intent of the regulation is still maintained despite the variance. These factors shall be used to guide the commission's decision on whether to approve or deny a variance request. That concludes my portion of the presentation. At this point, we will transition to the applicant's presentation, followed by an opportunity for questions, comments, and discussion. Thank you for your time, and I'm happy to assist you with any questions you may have.
Thank you. Uh, you're the applicant? Just state your name and address for the record.
My name is Jeremy Yoder, and my address is 1445 Sunset Street. Good evening, Chairman Height and, uh, commission members. I appreciate you giving me some time to speak with you this evening. Uh, my wife and I moved from Seattle, Washington after having grown up, my wife grew up in Longmont, I grew up in Denver, spent most of my adult life in Seattle. We moved back in the middle of the pandemic, not having actually seen the house in person prior to the purchase. Not to say I regret the purchase, I'm just simply giving you some context for us choosing the house that we did and when we did it. Um, sorry. And in doing so, um, we chose this house just because great location, but again, without the context of, of the house itself when we moved, okay? So, my wife and I, young family, um, but the main driver for our requests tonight is the fence variance. Why? Let's start with, if I could, the house. The house has some particularities, uh, that maybe are hard to capture here, but what I did was I went through every single house on our street and the adjacent street. Hopefully you could see these well enough, but what you have are single family ranch and a couple split levels, and I have four pages of houses that are very similar laid out. And then you have our house, um, built one year after Stro Heights was set in place, uh, and aligned on the, on the, excuse me, on the plot differently than any other house in our broader neighborhood. Um, I hope to highlight that. This is east facing side of our house, which is theoretically our front yard by city's standards, while our address and front door actually live facing west, facing the driveway, facing the alley on the west side of our house. That is the main driver for this request because, um, let me, so this is, I'll see, so as you see, um, from the city's standards, the request, this is our front yard. However, you see our, our front door is right here, and our back door leading into our dining room, double French doors, glass, um, leads out to, for our house's purpose, maybe not for the property's purpose, but for the house's purpose, leads out to our backyard, which means that when I let the dog out of the house, and again, the dog ultimately is the driver for this request, he has access to this space, and if we were to treat this as the access to the yard, there is actually no direct access to the yard. There is an adjacent fence gate right here, but my broader point being is that our front yard is, our front door is here in spite of, um, for the city's purpose, this being our front yard, okay? And so you see some egress pieces. Um, I think the broader point of sharing all of this is only to show how our house aligns differently than you would expect. To access the front door of the house, you come through this gravel walkway onto, um, an over, a covered area breezeway to our front door here, or if you come off of 15th on the north side of the house, accessing through the driveway, and again, the front door here. None of our neighbors, to be fair, I don't think there's a single other house in Stro Heights that is aligned on the property the way ours is. Um, so then if I think about the fence, um, Kristin has already graciously highlighted a little bit about our fence. The fence, although technically out of code, I want to acknowledge that, was definitely designed and constructed with the code explicitly in mind. Um, so I'll come back to those. First of all, seventy-two inch height of the fence designed specifically with that in mind. So if we go back to, sorry, my apologies. So I drew this line here on this drawing to highlight the point at which we are allowed to start having a six foot high solid fence, and that is this point, right where these meet, and that is this point right here, okay? And everything east of that is the forty-two inch height to this point, and then by my intention, completely transparent up until the capstone that holds the welded wire portion in place for the rest of the way. Now, the driver for all of this is a dog that, should he access the yard, the only way to act, let him access the yard directly is through what I've called the back door, what the city may refer to as the front door, and without having something that goes above the height that it's set at, clears the fence very easily when dogs come by the corner of the yard, people with strollers come by the corner of the yard, sometimes when cars come by the corner of the yard. This has happened on more than one occasion before the fence was in place, and he does it without even touching the fence. So, and then on top of that, and this is a small thing, the city isn't going to make a decision based on this, but as you can see, I have a young family and living on the corner of a fairly busy street. It is nice to have the safety and security of something a little bit taller that allows us to have independent play for our kids in the yard. Now, speaking specifically to Envision Longmont, which Kristin alluded to earlier, I do believe, um, that this fence that I have constructed, um, and you can see in these aerial images here, um, actually there, keeps with the beautification of Longmont, the safety of the neighborhood, and ultimately preserving the architectural integrity and uniqueness of the area. This is a historic home, um, owned originally by the Golden Family, Golden Van Lines family, or at some point owned by them along the way. I have a previous homeowner of the house who lives in our neighborhood this evening, tonight as well. Um, one little anecdote I want to leave you with tonight, so if I scroll to the bottom here, so this gives you some context for where we are in the city here. We have Longspreek Middle School. This is the property here. So if I go to this house, okay, this house right here, remarkably, the day that we submitted this application for variance, I was walking my dog and my son like I do every morning when the weather permits, and walked down the alley, uh, behind Sheremar Street, north of the fifteenth block, like I always do, and lo and behold, a large golden doodle comes, jumps over the fence, and granted, it's a chain link fence at forty-two inches. It's their backyard. They're allowed to have it higher, I get it, but clears the fence, and I have a dog and a small child. I could take probably for granted that I'm okay because of the type of dog, but I hope you can appreciate kind of the concern and fear that I felt in that moment to have a large dog clearing a fence to come bark at me and my dog as I'm walking by. This is exactly the context I'm hoping to avoid by, uh, prevent, by adding height to the fence, and in doing so, as I mentioned, I believe I've done it in a way consistent with the mandates of the code. The main exception being this piece right here that is just the cap to kind of hold the integrity of the fence together. Um, with that, any questions?
There's that dog.
He's a great Pyrenees poodle mix.
Wow. A jumper.
Named Finn. And I have some neighbors here tonight to speak on behalf of the fence and the property more broadly.
Thank you. Um, hold on one second. I can find my spot. So this is a public hearing, and the public is invited to speak. I have an inability to work my computer right now. Here we go. Um, I have a sign up list for this, um, project. Jude Biggs, um, if you're here and want to speak, please do so. And again, if you could state your name and address for the record, that'd be great. And again, if you could state your name and address for the record, that'd be great.
Good evening. I'm Jude Biggs. My husband is also here, Dennis Dubay, in that very Irish sweater. We live at 1600 Juniper now, which is two blocks away from where we lived about 10 years ago, 1445 Sunset. We originally bought the house from Kentsel Winter. I believe that Jeremy mentioned him and his company, the Golden Transit. And when we bought it, there was no fence there at all. We had two dogs, and so we promptly put in a fence. And according to the rules at that time, there was still the 42-inch height requirement. We fell in love when we first walked into that house because of the light. And what Kentsel had done was skew the orientation of that house so that it was full of light, unlike other places that we had seen. And it probably has some fancy name for a modern style of some sort. We fell in love with it, and because it was different, and it was beautiful, and we hoped to be able to add to that. We did have to add that fence, and because we had two dogs, and both of them were jumpers, and both of them were mischiefs, as we put politely. What we did to compensate for that, to keep the dogs in the yard, was to put some fencing fabric on top of the 42-inch height and have chicken wire that we bent over into the yard to be able to keep the dogs in. Nobody ever complained. It was uglier than sin. And I have to agree that the solution that Jeremy came up with was, is a heck of a lot better and much, much more beautiful. But we faced the same problem. Our choice would have been not to have a fence, not to have dogs, not to live there. And those just were not reasonable choices for us because we had already fallen in love with the house. One of the issues that I hear, sort of in between some of the other comments tonight, is the front door, back door issue. And to the extent that that's important for you to hear about, I want to share with you that from day one, when we lived there in 1988, October 88, the door that Jeremy is saying off of the driveway, off of 15th Street, was the front door. We never regarded the door on 15th Street as the front door. In fact, we used that patio area that was on 15th Street, very much like a back patio. And our friends came there, our relatives, whenever anybody visited, they always came in on the door that was on for the driveway, which comes off of 15th Street. So to the extent that there's history matters at all, that was always the front door. And because of that, there wasn't really a front yard. In terms of the alternatives, I think I've mentioned that really from our perspective weren't good alternatives. And Jeremy's alternative building is a vast improvement over our 36-year-old fence as of last year. I will admit freely, it, last year before Jeremy started it, it was uglier than sin, partly through weathering and old wood that had been replaced and fixed and fixed and fixed, and partly because his design is really artful. And I'm hoping that that ties in with the comprehensive plan for Longmont to take steps to beautify neighborhoods. Because if you drive by that corner, it really has a wow factor. I think another issue was whether there's some sort of adverse impact, just the opposite. Again, it just, it's gorgeous. And I'm not sure that the pictures tonight that you've briefly been shown and perhaps have been able to see in your packets do it justice. It's, everybody that I've talked to in that neighborhood really do like that. Is there much of a variance needed? No. It preserves, it really does achieve the safety issue. There's purpose, of course, for that 42 inches. So I have to stop.
I'll let you finish.
There's a reason for that. The transparency issue is taken care of. They've done a good job. And I'm out of time, but thank you.
Before you leave, I have one question. Just to clarify, you had indicated, I think you had described both doors as being on 15th Street. My appreciation is that the driveway backs into 15th Street or comes in off of 15th Street?
Yes.
And the main door that's used, that was used by you and used by the Yoders is off of that driveway?
Correct.
And the other door, I don't know where that door faces. Does it face Sunset or the back, or the side yard?
The other door faces Sunset. It's a double door that opens up, and it's-
To a patio?
To a patio.
Okay. Are there any other ingress egress points in the house?
There's sort of a secret tunnel. Part of the reason-
To the coal mine down there? I'm kidding. Thank you very much.
No, in the basement, there, the garage is a separate building. And the house is, it has a walkway in between with a covered roof. And if you go into the Longmont, into the laundry room, you can go underneath that walkway in, you know, up some stairs into the garage, and you can get out that way. I don't think that counts, but it, it was another reason why we fell in love with the house because we felt like we had a secret, which is now out.
Thank you very much.
Thank you.
Are there any other members of the public that would like to speak? Come on down.
Good evening. My name is Christina Van Dornik. I live at 1439 Sunset, so I'm their direct next-door neighbor. And I just made a really quick prepared statement. We moved in about six months after the Yoders. It was winter time. The yard that is their backyard that faces Sunset Street was pretty tired and worn and had kind of been let to get overgrown. But the second year that we lived there, Jeremy finished doing work inside the house and pivoted to the yard. I just wanted to say that he, he was a very thoughtful person while he was putting that fence up. He did not want to offend anybody, disturb anybody. He wanted other people's input. Throughout the project, the fence was well-constructed. It was attractive. The orientation makes sense for the house. I walk a good two miles every day in that neighborhood, and no other house is oriented the way that their house is. Like what he was saying about the ranch house is usually facing, but that house is different. And they do indeed orient away from Sunset Street. They have had two dogs. They have one large dog now. And I agree with him, there are fences in that neighborhood where I am afraid when I walk past because of the dogs. And he's obviously a responsible person that didn't want that to happen, did not, doesn't want his dog to be a danger. It allows his young son to play outside. I also appreciate that he set it back from the sidewalk, so there's no incursion into the walking space. And in my walks through the neighborhood, I got to tell you, there's all kinds of unattractive fences. There are places where people's shrubs are overgrown and keep you from being able to walk past on the sidewalk. There are things that block my vision when I'm driving the car, whether it's large vehicles, or shrubs, or poorly constructed, you know, additions. And his doesn't do that. I park my car within 20 feet of his fence, and I don't feel any danger or any obstruction. I can see when a vehicle is coming from that direction. So I understand that the 42-inch limit is set to avoid that kind of obstruction. And I think that his design, like she said, is very attractive. It doesn't block vision. It's appreciated. I've never heard anyone in the neighborhood make any negative comment or say anything against it that would lead you to believe that they'd felt like it was obstructive or in any way a negative to the neighborhood. I find it really ironic that the Yoders are the people that have this kind of variance necessity because they are ideal neighbors. They host neighborhood dinners. They, you know, pitch in and shovel their people's snow. They're always concerned. They pay attention. And I just would really like to see them get a variance per request for this because it's, I think that he met the intent of the law. Any questions?
No, thank you.
Thank you very much.
Other members of the public like to speak, sir?
I'm Mark Silver, 1509 Linden Street. Pretty much everything's been said that I would have said, so I'll keep it brief. I have direct view of the Yoder's fence from my front door. So obviously, if it was an eyesore, I would be here saying, yeah, take it down. But, and I've been inside the Yoder's house. Jeremy's a master craftsman. I think one of the things in the code was the permanence of fences. And to the point that was already made about, there's a fence on, I think it's a rental property on 14th and Sunset, that it looks like if a dog jumped on it, it would blow it over. So that's a safety, that's a safety issue. But the Yoder's fence, that thing is permanent. So I think that part of it complies with the code. Yeah, like I said, he's a master craftsman, and he did the same inside his house as outside. And pretty much everything else that's already been said about how the uniqueness of the house and the fence kind of complement each other. That's it.
Thank you. Anyone else? Hold on one second while we try to adjust the timer.
Okay. I promise it won't take long.
I trust you. And now I'm just going to let you go.
So I just want to echo what everybody else-
Your name and address.
Oh, I'm sorry. I'm Debbie Trevor. I'm at 1444 Linden, which is across the alley from where the Yoders live.
It's going to beep in a minute, in 10 seconds, and you get longer than that.
I only may need 20.
Okay, you're good to go.
Okay. So again, like I said, I would just like to echo what everybody else has said. One of the things that I think I should add on to this is not only has the Yoder family welcomed everybody around them, but we also welcomed them into our lives as well because they're just that type of people. When Jeremy was building this fence, he was not only being diligent in getting it done in a timely manner. I don't know if you've seen other areas that they build their fence that could take a year and a half or whatever. This poor man was out there as late as he could, always asking neighbors, am I keeping you awake? Never made as much noise as what you would expect somebody would be doing. He's out there, tiny little drills, lights, all that stuff like that, just to do his own stuff. Felt bad for him. There was times where we felt like we should go out there and help him. So you've never met a more courteous and generous family. They, I really believe that the fence that they have there has enhanced the neighborhood. The rest of us should be embarrassed with our fences that we have compared to what they have. So I really hope that you do pass this for them. Take a trip down there. Go look at it yourself. You'll see that there's no hindrance or anything with this fence being there. So again, thank you for your time.
Thank you. Anyone else? Thank you all. Now that I've seen anyone else, I'm going to close this off from public invited to speak and open it up to the commission for comments, discussion points, questions to staff, questions to the applicant. Fire away. Seat three is Commissioner Boone.
Thank you, Chair Height. So I have a question and a couple of comments. Why was this project brought up for a variance? Was it built, was it built without a fence permit? And someone complained about that, or a city inspector complained about it, or something?
Yes, it was built without a permit, and I don't, there was no complaint that was lodged to the city in reference to it. I believe code enforcement happened to observe it when they were out in the course of their duties, but no complaint was made to the city in reference to this.
Okay, thank you. And then my comment is, this house is really unlike any other house there on the block. And I'm wondering if this owner, or the city, or anybody has considered readdressing it such that its address is on 15th Street? Because it clearly does not have a front yard. And the backyard is what faces Sunset, which has different rules. And yet the address is Sunset, so there is a confusion there, and I understand why a variance might be needed. But because of that confusion, other than the fact that a permit was pulled, and apparently that's taken care of now, I think they did a good job trying to navigate a confusing property. And I think it complies with all the rules, and I'll be voting for the variance.
Did you have an answer as to the-
I appreciate that, Chairman Boone. Or not Chairman, apologies. So I love the question about redressing. I've actually had that thought. My concern is this, is to have it readdressed along 15th would mean that this becomes our front yard, which theoretically is fine, but there is no ingress or egress on the north side of the property. It's actually, as you might, well, that's probably not the best.
You don't have a front yard anyway you look at it.
Yeah, that's exactly right. I mean, it's simple as that, and I think clearly we're not going to, you can't address it to the alley, right? It's probably more accurately addressed to 15th than it is to Sunset, to your point. But I think it felt like an administrative nightmare to go through that only for that to then create new problems where this would have to then follow, this, this section would have to follow the fences, the codes, rules, and then this little section right here would then become the backyard, which would give admittedly the dogs some space, but then creates different obstacles, I guess, is my point.
Thank you.
Yeah.
Commissioner Earl.
I'm happy to defer to Commissioner Boone if she wanted to follow up on that first, and then I can come back.
It's a quick follow-up. I mean, it kind of seems like a safety issue to have an address-
... on Sunset Street and not have any numbers identifying you off of Sunset Street, like for the fire department or whatever? Or maybe you do have numbers on the fence?
So, we do. It's actually not on the fence. Apologies. This, this, it is not captured, and maybe if you all look at Google Street View, you would see. This is how it was when we bought the house, but now I have put very large numbers right in between the doors and the windows along the brick here, such that when you see it from the street through trees, et cetera, you can see 1445 vertically there, and I'm sure my neighbor's going to attest to this.
Okay, thank you.
Absolutely.
Commissioner Earl?
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. A couple of questions.
You're not on.
I'm not on? I think I am.
You are on, my bad.
Thank you. Planner Code, I have a couple of questions for you, and these are, you know, both specific to this property but also broader. So in the applicant's survey, they have a delineation between backyard, side yard, and front yard. And I know there's, whether we practically consider it the front yard or whatever, less concerned about that for the second, but what is that delineation in the code of what is a backyard versus a front yard? Is there a delineation?
There is a definition.
Okay.
So the setback front means the setback extending across the full width of the lot between the front lot line and the closest projection of a building or structure. Unfortunately, we do not have a definition for front yard. This would be what we rely on in reference to that. And given the fact that to their west, that is an alley, and they are addressed off Sunset, would be my assumption as far as how that is the determination of their front yard.
Okay. So in the, in that survey, there is a, like, literal line, kind of follow, it looks like it's following the, what is that? East face of the house? Would that be kind of the practical way that the city would think about that without a perfect definition?
Correct, because there are provisions in code that allow you the side yard height, even on a corner lot, so that delineation is the delineation of the front face of their dwelling.
Okay. Okay. Thank you, and thank you for changing the, because that's exactly the map I'm looking at right now.
And to her point, I did some research on what front yard means in like broader planning kind of code and language. And it's the facing, the portion of the house facing the address side of the block. So, like, just, again, for city's purposes, because my address is here.
Yeah, yeah.
And to Ms. Boone's point, this is the front yard. And if this were, if it were a 15th Street address, then this line would be extended out here to this point. And this would all then be considered front yard by the city's standards.
Okay.
Or by planning standards more broadly.
Thank you. And Commissioner Cody, maybe, this is for you, or possibly Grant or Jeremy. One of our consideration factors is whether the purpose and intent behind the regulations would be maintained. What is the purpose and intent behind the regulation related to the fence height, so that we can evaluate that?
That could probably be expanded upon by Jeremy or Grant. But typically, the biggest concern about the front yard height is site visibility, so that you're not creating a safety issue for traffic in reference to site.
And we had one neighbor who made a comment about that. They didn't believe it was an issue. You also, in our record, there's, I'm sorry, I wanna make sure I get the title right here. This was a traffic engineer with the city who also did not believe there was an issue, correct?
You are correct.
All right, thank you. Jeremy Grant, either of you wanna expand on that?
I think the only thing I would add, Commissioner, is obviously it does come down to character of the area, and that's obviously been discussed as well in terms of what does the overall character of the neighborhood look like, just from a consistency standpoint. So, but as Kristen pointed out, obviously the safety is paramount in terms of meeting those requirements.
Thank you, that's really helpful. I did happen to drive by this property this weekend. I was not actually intending to, but I was driving down 15th and noticed it. It is a very unique lot compared to everything else in the neighborhood. I circled the block a couple of times. It does look attractive, so I appreciate what the applicant has done to do that. It also doesn't seem like a front yard, given the trees and everything else there, even if you didn't have that fence. It's kinda hard to say that that feels like a front yard to me. But, I appreciate you being here. Thank you for, folks who are coming to make comment as well. We, I appreciate that a lot. Thank you, Mr. Chairman.
Great, I'm gonna go next, which is to inquire of our staff attorney, or Attorney Terrell. 1505-100, fences and walls, subpart... F, corner and reverse corner lots. Have you looked at this, studied this? Do you have any insight as to whether or not it would apply? I mean, as I read it, there's the ability to put fences along corner lots in somewhat disregard? Maybe, front yard, side yard issues? Do you read that at all? Do you see that at all?
Good evening again, Chair Height. I think we're spending too much time together, because I was actually asking Grant the same question about that code provision as you all were starting your discussion. I think it comes down to, so the subsection F, referring to corner and reverse corner lots, is talking about the side yard and rear yard. So, I, I do think the definition that Kristen gave for front yard would apply to that kind of diagonal shaped yard adjacent to Sunset here. So, even though there is some special dispensation for corner lots, I, I don't think the city would interpret that kind of yellow, the lighter green color as a rear or side yard for purposes of that F section. So, I do think a variance is appropriate for addressing the height restriction. But, to the extent you're asking about the purpose of the code, you know, there, there is some talk in the code about for corner, reverse corner lots, recognizing the special nature of the property, and that there is an exception to that 42-inch height. It could be up to six feet for a residential property based on G below. The only additional criteria is the site distance. I don't have any opinion on the site distance. I don't, I'm not a traffic engineer, cyber, I'm not an engineer. I'll leave it at that. But, I do think there's some kind of intent when you're looking at variances concerning this special circumstance. Look at that fence code that you cited.
Great. And then unfortunately, I have another question, which I think I might direct to Planner Cody, which is, is the top part of this a woven fence?
I'm glad you asked that. Kristen asked me this exact same question, and what was placed there is exactly, took that into account. So, the code explicitly states woven wire, or chain link or other woven wires, what the code explicitly states. And this is what we have, and it's called welded wire. And you may say that's a very fine distinction to be making on my part, but it is a very explicit difference, one. And two, I would argue, again, the aesthetic implications of the welded wire versus woven wire is not insignificant, in my opinion. There is a chain link fence all along 15th, the moment you go one block east of us because of the school, the middle school there. And anyone who walks down there, I think you would say there is a meaningfully different experience to be had along the chain link fence versus what you see, again, right here on our fence.
Yeah, my Google search isn't helpful. Okay. Any other questions, comments, motions, ideas? Commissioner Ramat?
I do have a question. So, I do notice that there's a 50% transparency requirement. Does this fence meet that?
It does. So, to your question, I think it technically is 45% transparency. So, it is not exact. There is a very specific reason for it, the numbering of the pickets. As you can see, it's intended to, so, there's three, three of these pickets for every five of those. And again, the goal is to prevent the dog from getting out of the fence. And so, I understand it's not quite 50%. I acknowledge that. I do believe the safety pieces are still accounted for without the specificity of the 50. And again, to my point, my concern was the dog getting through the 50%.
Okay, thank you.
Yes.
Does anyone wanna run us through variance considerations? Or not? I'm sorry. Commissioner Boone?
One more comment. The way I read the 50% transparency is that, and maybe I'm misinterpreting the code. If you take the entire 72-inch fence, with that whole upper part being totally transparent, and then having semi-transparency for the lower part, I think you've easily met the 50%.
I appreciate that.
That's all.
That's a generous interpretation. I'm grateful.
You bought without knowing?
We did, in fact. We did not see the house until the day we moved into it.
And have you ever thought about a dog run, a wire from one end of the yard to the other with a chain on it?
I have not thought of that. That is certainly a possibility, I think, one. So, I'm, you had like five criteria at the start that we had to speak to. So, the difficulty of that as a solution is without some sort of accommodation for height on this north and east side of the house, there is no solution to let the dog out from the backyard, or from the back door. So, to do a dog run, as an example, would require a person to walk out with the dog, attach a lead to a line, and let the dog do that. That does not feel like a very functional solution to me in light of things that are out of our control relative to the original design and character of the house. And, you know, we'll figure out what we have to figure out if that's what's required.
It, it's one obvious option as a dog owner that, that shows up to me. Can, can either you, Jeremy, or Planner Cody, run us through what, and I think it's the overhead view, or maybe a view of the fence? The picture of your house from the drone?
Yep.
Yes, that, that picture. If you had, if it were all side yard, and you could put up the, the fence, if, if your front yard was 15th Street, where would you be?
If our front yard were 15th Street, I think that creates different complexity. But, I think it just means that, so, so, so two things.
Well, let me, let me change it to this one. You identified on your presentation a point where you decided where you, you could go up to six feet high. How did you make that determination?
That is the extension of this line of the house, the front of the house by city standards, extended along the axis it creates out to the street.
To create a- To create a side yard, side and backyard?
So, so this is by, again, by city standards, front yard. This is by city standards, a side yard.
Okay. Flip it around, so 15th, it would go the other way?
This way.
That axis?
Yes.
Still doesn't help you a lot?
Well, it, to your point, it does create a section, i.e. we could let the dog out here. There are structural pieces in the yard, including this retaining wall that's three feet high, two and a half feet high, in the yard, that it would be really hard to build a fence-
Across.
Along that, over this is all bermed, giving this space just a little bit of privacy. So, again, to your point-
Go back to your area, let me see, see that.
So, that's this, this section right here. I'm sorry that I can't, I'm sure I could actually get it zoomed in here. Let's... Actually, let's go down this where, you can't really see it here, I'm sorry to say. This is all bermed here, and-
So, the snow-covered street is Sunset?
This is Sunset, this is 15th, correct.
Okay. And so, to do it the sideways, you'd have to go from basically behind that tree?
Here, yeah, exactly, right through, couple of blue spruces, through the wall, et cetera.
And otherwise, you could go straight from the corner of the house to behind the pine tree?
That's, that's correct. That's how, that's how it's structured in a sense. Right now, as you can see right here, there is a point at which it transitions from the full six-feet privacy fence to the 45%, 40% transparency, and then full transparency above 42 inches.
That doesn't allow you to let the dog out the back?
Exactly. And as you can see here, the door right here lives adjacent to that gate, but not within it. And if it were to live within it, then it would be a giant gate back and forth just to get to the front door in the first place.
Yep. And just to be nosy, behind the garage, is that a six-foot-high fence?
It is.
Between you and your neighbor to the-
So, that is Allen Christie here. That is my abutting to their property right here. That's their property. And you can see, that's this fence here. And as it gets, actually, right here, you can see, actually, I did it along their line of their house versus the line of my house. It drops down to that 42 inches and extends out to the street at a lower height.
And then I was confused. This is a stone walkway between your neighbors?
Unfortunately, this, this right here?
Yep.
That's gravel as it stands right now. There is a concrete pad off the porch here, and then there's a concrete pad off of the breezeway here. And then we poured a concrete pad back here last year, and that's where we host neighborhood meals. And lives under, in the summer, this is a outstanding red bud tree that protects that space. It's, it's wonderful. But, to your point-
That's never been your driveway, and that's never your access point, never your entryway into your home?
No.
Has a weird lot. So, there is the substantial awkwardness of the property criterion necessary for a variance.
Yeah, this way you can see it, so.
Physical uniqueness, I think, is the standard. Other questions, comments, thoughts, motions? I'm pushing.
Sorry.
Commissioner Poland, I think you're next.
As I look at this, if you take into consideration the front yard, and I'm, I'm just trying to think out loud here. Instead of, instead of the front yard being, considering that the front yard, to me, the ingress, egress, the blue right behind it, that line, no, on the bottom, yeah, that. If you could consider that the front yard, because it basically joins the front yard of the neighbor, correct?
The side of their front yard, but yes?
Yes.
Yes?
If you consider that the front yard, then the rest of it is either side yard or backyard.
So, to be clear, you're suggesting like this, this is, I think-
The blue part.
Nine or 10 feet across, you're suggesting this being the front yard?
I don't think that could-
I don't know, Jeremy, I mean-
There's no grief. I'm just clarifying, make sure I understand what you're saying.
That doesn't go to a street, really. That just goes to the joint of-
It's, it's skewed to the street. It's skewed to Sunset.
I don't think I'm following, what is your take as a result of that? I apologize.
Then, then when you have labeled the front yard, becomes side yard and backyard. The light green.
This being side yard, this being backyard?
Yeah. I mean, because-
I understand what you're saying. I mean, like, to, to your point, with the address, we have, the address either is this side or this side.
Does a door have to face the side of the house that you consider the front of the house? Do you have to have a door facing the front of the house?
I know that, I know of houses in Stro for which that is not the case. So, I would guess that's not the case, but I'm not a lawyer, so.
And that's basically-
We don't have a definition of front yard in our code, correct? But, front yard generally is meant to be the yard facing the street where the addresses apply.
So, from that ingress, egress where I'm talking about, can you get to the front door walking?
Yes, that, I mean-
If somebody, if somebody parks on Sunset,
Yep.
would they walk along that ingress, egress up to the front door?
Yes, I mean, Allen Christie do that all the time, yeah. Or when they come over, I should say, yes. Yeah, the mailboxes.
To the front door off the living room?
Yes. Yes.
Not the backdoor French door?
Not the backdoor French door. Because that's at the door that people come through because of the fence.
Chair Poland, to answer your question, in the absence of a definition for front yard, our code specifies that it comes to the planning director to make that decision. So, I would defer to planning staff who has already determined that the front yard is the, the light green color. I don't necessarily disagree with your, your point from a practical matter. And perhaps that goes to special circumstances, including but not limited to exceptional limitations to dimension, shape, or topography of the property, which is a variance criteria.
I guess to me, it gets down to item E. A variance should not be granted for a self-imposed hardship, whether or not you can consider this a self-imposed hardship. Or because of the contour of the lot, it's not self-imposed.
And to that point, Commissioner Poland, the review criteria for variances indicates that you may only grant a variance from the terms of the development code if the application demonstrates compliance with the following additional criteria. A is special circumstance exists that strict application of the standards adopted in this development code will result in undue hardship or practical difficulties. So, if the commission were to find undue hardship, then there's not necessarily a need in- Then there's not necessarily a needing of practical difficulties to your question. Oh, you're looking at self-imposed hardship, I apologize, I was down there further.
Right, A, B, C, D, E, F.
Yeah, and then B, C, D, E, and F apply.
The self-imposed being ownership of a dog? And small children that might play in the street?
No, self-imposed. Meaning, I guess, what is considered the backyard of the house?
He didn't create that.
He didn't create that.
No, our code created that. Our planning director, our staff created that. I'm not so sure that he created that for himself.
I created for myself insofar as we bought the house.
Is there?
And, and prior owners had treated it as a backyard.
I'm sorry.
Um, yeah, I just had a couple of quick questions. So on access to the yard, is the only access, I don't know if this was asked earlier, is the only access that fence by what you call your front door?
So to your question, there is a gate entrance right here and there is also a gate entrance. Less obvious unless you knew it was there, but it does exist in the fence on the side right here off of, um, this ingress egress.
Okay.
Which, to be clear, was exactly where the ingress egress was prior to the fence being redone, both of those. Nothing was changed in that respect.
I think that's the only question I had, thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman, um, I've, we've gone back and forth on this, I think this is a very weird lot. I would love to quibble over the backyard, front yard, side yard definitions and how it's interpreted. In the interest of time, um, because I'm, I'm convinced, I'd like to move, uh, Planning and Zoning Resolution twenty twenty-five dash two A. Which is the resolution for Planning Commission approving the variance request for fourteen forty-five Sunset Street.
I'll second the motion.
Uh, for the record, I'll just say that I find that it does meet as far as the criteria of, uh, evaluation for, uh, variances. It does meet five A, uh, special circumstances included, not limited to exceptional limitations to the dimension, shape, or topography of the property. I also find that it meets B, C, D, I am going to find that it also meets E because I do not believe that it was a self-imposed hardship and it also meets F. And therefore I will be also an approval of this.
Which is, um, Mr. Yoder? You'd indicated that it's a forty-five percent opacity standard versus the fifty percent. And why was that and how does it apply? You're, you're greater than fifty percent. For the non-meshed top part.
I understand.
So where it is six feet tall, you're at forty-five percent?
So from a six-feet perspective, I, I would argue anything over forty-two inches is virtually transparent. I think we could argue about how much of a percentage the wire actually creates a limit to transparency. But like, again, I don't know anyone who walks by it who is tall enough, besides myself, to have their view limited by this. To your question around this portion not being fifty percent for me, architecture friend of graduate school, so like, you seeing. Like, my goal was, how can I continue to align pickets visually and continue the continuity of the fence consistently around the property? While being tight enough to keep the dog in, not squeezing through these areas. And not having to put the welded wire on the bottom half of the fence as well. So there's some aesthetic pieces and there's just some basic safety pieces as well.
And for the six-foot? High fence without the, um, non-woven metal on the top of it?
Yep.
What's the opacity limit there, any?
No.
None?
None.
It could be a wall? That's what I needed, thank you. Any other comment before we vote? Move to vote?
Commissioner Boone?
Aye.
Commissioner Poland?
Yes.
Chair Height?
Aye.
Commissioner Arment?
Aye.
Commissioner Earl?
Aye.
Chair, that passes unanimously, five to zero.
Congratulations, I have to read somewhere. This matter has now been approved by the Planning Commission, but there's a right to appeal. Um, and I need to read this, this now, this item now enters a seven-day appeal period. During this time period, any aggrieved party may appeal the commission's decision by submitting a written appeal. In the form of a letter stating why the Planning and Zoning Commission's decision should be amended or reversed and sent to city council. All appeals must be in writing and must be received by the city clerk's office and the planning office within this seven-day appeal period. Thank you very much. Fantastic, um, we now move to our second. BOA decision matter, um, Flatiron's Allergy and Asthma Center sign variance, Senior Planner Kristen Cody.
Good evening. I will be now presenting the request for a sign variance for Flatiron Allergy and Asthma Center located at nine hundred South Main Street, Suite Two Hundred. The property is located at nine hundred South Main Street, Suite Two Hundred, it covers approximately one point zero three acres. And was annexed in nineteen sixty-five as part of the Dickens Annexation, is currently zoned MUC, which is the mixed-use corridor. And Envision Longmont also designates this site as a mixed-use corridor, supporting a variety of uses. Flatiron Allergy and Asthma Center is requesting a variance to sell. To install a sixteen-foot, three-inch by three-foot, four-inch, so it's fifty-four point one seven square feet approximately, non-illuminated wall sign on the south elevation of the building. According to Longmont Development Code, Section fifteen oh six zero six zero. Tenants in multi-tenant buildings are permitted one wall sign per tenant, but only if they have an exterior public entrance. Since Suite Two Hundred does not have an exterior, exterior entrance, the sign is not allowed under current code standards requiring a variance for approval. Here you can see the south elevation of the building where the applicant is proposing to install a sign is right in that area. The door that you see on this imagery leads to an interior shared hallway in the building and not to directly to the business. This image provides a visual representation of the proposed sign. As mentioned, the sign is non-illuminated and would have a total area, square footage of fifty-four point one seven square feet. Public notice was completed in accordance with Longmont Development Code and no comments were received in reference to this application. Before we review the variance criteria, all development applications must meet these general approval criteria. One, consistency with a comprehensive plan. Two, compliance with city standards. Three, compatibility with surrounding properties. Four, no significant adverse effects on nearby properties. Five, compliance with sustainability requirements where applicable. And six, an appropriate transportation plan where applicable. Now for the specific variance criteria outlined in fifteen oh two zero six zero I five A, Roman numeral two of the code. The following factors are considered in determining practical difficulty. Whether the property and development can have a beneficial use without the variance. Uh, the degree to which the variance deviates from the standard, whether the applicant was aware of the standard when purchasing the property. Whether the standard can be addressed through other means other than a variance. And whether the intent be- behind the regulation would be maintained by granting the variance. These factors will help determine whether variance is justified. That concludes my portion of the presentation, the applicant's representative is here and they do also have a presentation that they would like to show you. Thank you.
Thank you. Good evening, Chairman Height and the Planning and Zoning Commission Board, appreciate the time. Be sure to tell us who you are.
Yes, sir.
Thank you.
My name is Nick Gentry, I am here with Adcon Signs. We are the sign vendor for Flatiron's Allergy and Asthma Center. And, uh, our location is at thirty-seven twenty-five, uh, Canal Drive in Fort Collins. And, uh, let's see here. First off, uh, Adcon Signs is grateful for, uh, the tenant panel. That we were, uh, approved for the multi-tenant monument sign along Main Street. And we would submit, in the best interest of Flatiron Allergy and Asthma Center, a non-illuminated exterior wall sign on the south elevation. Will increase visibility for their patients to be able to locate the practice in a timely manner. Here we go. Okay, so this is the, uh, proposed exterior wall sign, uh, for the Flatiron Allergy and Asthma Center. Again, as, uh, Planner Cody stated, it would be along the, uh, south elevation in that sign band location. Right outside of the tenant space. I know that the, the print is a little bit hard to see, but it is a reverse pan-channel letter sign. So it's not a cabinet sign. I'd be happy to, uh, I do have an enlarged, uh, physical copy if anyone would like to see that as well. We would ask that the Board of Adjustment, please consider, uh, the LDC Section fifteen oh six dot zero six zero. One square foot per linear foot of sign wall for multi-tenant buildings. I believe our tenant space is roughly fifty-four point seven linear feet. And as Planner Cody pointed out, the wall sign area is fifty-four point one seven square feet. Which I believe does fall within that, uh, framework and criteria. Factoring in all of, all of the criteria and researching everything and respecting the LDC sign regulations. Adcon Signs, on behalf of our client, would please ask that you consider. This sign variance for this exterior wall sign. We do believe that not granting this variance would result in an undue hardship. If Flatiron Allergy and Asthma are not able to have the exposure that we believe would be necessary. For their, uh, clients to be able to, uh, properly locate their, uh, their practice. Just, we, we would submit that it is simply a matter of practicality for the Flatiron Allergy and Asthma Center. Client base, existing and new, to receive expedited and attentive medical care. I guess to, to finally submit, um, granting this variance request would. We don't believe nullify or impair the purpose of the LDC Chapter fifteen dot zero six. Sign code, simply because it is a non-illuminated re- reverse pan-channel letter sign. And it's not a cabinet sign. Per Section fifteen dot oh six dot zero five zero. A five. Creative wall sign designs are encouraged and. I know that when we went into design with our client, um, and especially our account manager. I know that there was a lot of thought and consideration into the design. And, uh, we do believe that it is a creative design. It is non-illuminated, so I don't believe that it would be lighting up the night sky per se, um, at night and, uh. Would just ask for consideration of this non-illuminated wall sign. And, uh, with that, um, be happy to answer any questions.
Thank you, um, it is a public hearing and public is invited to be heard. The sign-up list, I think, is just you, you're Nick Garrity?
Nick Gentry, yes.
Gentry, sorry, I, I apologize, I read it wrong. Are there any other members of the public that would like to be heard? That said, I do have one question, what is a cabinet sign?
Cabinet sign is, um, basically it's, it's got a backer behind channel letters. And so the, these are simply just channel letters along the facade.
Okay, um, I also wanted to clarify too, I didn't see any other signage on this building, maybe one.
The, uh, dental office does have two wall signs. Along, one along the south elevation and then another one along, I believe, the east elevation.
Okay, and how many businesses are in this building?
I believe three.
Three different, okay, um, and I think you'd indicated. There's a street sign, there's some monumentation on the road that identifies this practice?
Correct, there is, uh, a tenant panel in the multi-tenant monument sign.
On the road?
Yes, sir, along Main Street, yeah.
Okay, um, and I think my last question is, so it looks to be an upstairs and downstairs of where this. Sign is going to go on the facade, what, what practices or what operations are being conducted behind those windows? Upstairs, what's that, do you know?
I'm not sure.
Downstairs, is that the asthma center?
No, there, there, I believe upstairs in Suite Two Hundred.
It's upstairs?
I believe so.
Okay, how would this sign located where it is not cause confusion for the prospective patients?
I believe that it would indicate when patients do come into the parking lot. Kind of a marker indicator of where they could enter, because there is an entrance right there, um, just to the right of where that sign would, would be located. And then they could enter the building and then go upstairs.
Planner Cody, I think you had a, maybe a photograph of the front of the building where you indicated there's a door that doesn't go, or maybe?
Correct, on the south elevation, there is a door that leads to a hallway and that would be directly under where the signage is proposed to be placed. And it's my understanding in speaking with, um, the individual who reviewed the sign permit, that that door is the. Door that would lead most directly to the Allergy and Asthma Center.
And do you know, sir, whether or not that's the door that people use, because it didn't look like a front door to me, it looked like a patio door?
I, I'm not exactly sure, I believe that the entrance to get up to the suite is. I'm not exactly sure. I believe that the entrance to get up to the suite is to the right of where that sign would be located and I can...
Kristen, can you get your picture up?
I certainly can.
Thanks. Thank you.
So this is the south elevation. To the right would be the dental office sign. This is the proposed placement of the asthma center sign. It's my understanding this is the door that leads most directly to the asthma center. I believe on the front face of the building, there is a sign for a law office and I'm not sure what's on the north side of the building as far as signage.
I believe when I posted the temporary signs, there is another dental sign along the east elevation. And again, I do apologize. I'm not exactly sure of the main entrance. My guess would be right where that door is to the right.
With the main entryway?
Yeah.
Right. Under the arches. Under the arches.
Yeah, and just...
Okay. I'm going to move on to... Any other questions, comments? I think Commissioner Boone?
I just have a comment. I think precedent has been set by allowing a sign for the dental office looking at this front elevation over on the right-hand side. And the dental office is upstairs. And this is the same situation except for that's on the other side of the main entrance. I guess if I was a tenant going in there, I would assume, and maybe this is one of those criterias, not knowing not knowing the standard when they went in or whatnot. But I would assume that the precedent has already been set and that a similar small sign would be allowed on the front of the wall in front of their space. Now, I understand why if you had twenty businesses in this in this building that you wouldn't want signs all over the place. But from what I can see, and there was a picture somewhere of the monument sign. I think there's just three businesses in the place. Is that incorrect?
Correct. Yeah, there's the law office, which does have an exterior public entrance. And then the dental office has an interior public entrance, similar to Flat Iron Allergy and Asthma.
Right. So this seems like an appropriate place for a variance, particularly since the dental office probably got a variance as well. It's the same condition. It's just mirrored. Thank you.
Commissioner Poland?
I think Grant had something he wanted to say quickly.
Just briefly, our research shows that the dental signs were permitted under a prior code and there were different requirements when those were permitted, just for the commission's edification.
So just to confirm, it looks like the law office is the entire first floor and then the dental office and the asthma center both share the upper floor.
That is my understanding. And there is a sign for the dental office on the east elevation and there is no signage on the north elevation of this building.
Thank you.
Commissioner Boone?
I'm not a hundred percent sure, but I believe that the law office has a wall sign on the west side. Although we don't have a picture of the west side. That's all.
Other thoughts, comments, questions? Proposals? Review criterion review? Oh, I'm sorry.
No worries.
This guy is lying on it. Commissioner Mont, sorry.
So in our review criteria, it mentions intent of code. And it was mentioned that this code does not allow exterior signage if you do not have a direct access. I'm just kind of wondering what the intent behind that is or any insight into the reasoning there. I don't know who would be able to provide that if anyone would.
I was not involved in that portion of code when it was adopted, so I don't really have a lot of insight into that. I don't know if our director or legal counsel would like to address that question.
Through the chairman, Commissioner, I also was not present. However, having administered other sign codes, I could speak to the general intent of having that type of requirement. And actually Commissioner Boone kind of indicated the case. I think overall, the intent to minimize signs on next year building when there are circumstances, when there are multitudes of, say, offices in a single building, obviously if every single office or every single business office was allowed a sign, it would probably be considered sign clutter if every single one was allowed. So that's the general premise or general intent from minimizing or with regard to minimizing the allowance for signs if there isn't a direct entrance.
Okay. Thank you.
Commissioner Earl, sorry.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. I'm just going to go through this stream of consciousness, so I apologize. I'm going through our review criteria here. So we have special circumstances that exist, which... So I did not realize when looking at the applicant that the dental office was also on the second floor, also without an exterior entrance and yet was permitted. To me, that actually makes it very clear that, you know, the applicant would have assumed that they would have been able, a similar standard. So, you know, that practical difficulty to me is met. It does not nullify or impair the purpose. The sign itself is not looking for anything that is not allowed in the code. It is a south-facing. It doesn't even face Main Street, so it's not particularly visible from Main Street, but it is for that wayfinding. It does not impact surrounding properties. We saw no comments from that. To me, that, you know, the variance here is just allowing the sign. We're not allowing anything different about the sign. So it does seem like a least possible deviation. For that reason, I will move Planning and Zoning Resolution twenty-two-five-three A, which approves the variance request for Flat Iron Allergy and Asthma.
Thank you very much. Before we move forward, is there a second? Commissioner Poland?
I will second that.
Fantastic. Any further comment? I have one, which is... Maybe some, Mr. Garrity, does the owner approve of this sign going on the building?
They do. They do.
Thank you.
And I've actually got their letter on my flash drive. I should have printed it out. So I'd be happy to email it to you.
No, no, that's, I trust you. Other comments?
Yes.
Sorry.
Yes, I'm still on, so I'm good. I'm just going to say this. Given the fact that the monument does have all three businesses on it, it is a little confusing. I could see where it could be confusing for somebody then to go into the parking lot and only see two. Somebody could take that to mean that the third place is no longer there. To me, it just kind of evens everything out and does make it much more clearer.
And I had one more question too, which is, I think possibly the doorway that we had identified under the arch or near the arch, is there, somewhere I saw vinyl window signage. Is there signage on that door?
Yes, there would be, yes.
Okay. Because it's on the second floor where there's no way to get to the, there's no doorway to the second floor immediately obvious.
Correct.
And you think the law firm is on the entire first floor? Interesting.
Yeah, I apologize. I haven't been in the building, so I can't speak for that.
Further comment? Okay, let's vote.
Commissioner Boone?
Aye.
Commissioner Poland?
Yes.
Aye.
Chair Height? Commissioner Arment?
Aye.
Commissioner Earl?
Yes.
Chair, that passes unanimously, five to zero.
Thank you very much. Congratulations.
Thank you so much.
I got to read the appeal process, so this matter has been approved. It now enters a seven-day appeal period. During that time, any agreed party may appeal the commissioner's decision by submitting a written appeal letter stating why the Planning and Zoning Commission's decision should be amended or reversed by city council. Appeals must be in writing, must be received by the city clerk's office and the planning office within the seven-day appeal period. Thank you very much.
Thank you very much. Appreciate your time.
All right. That concludes the public hearing portion of tonight's meeting. There is one final call for public invited to be heard. I don't see any additional members of the public. Speak now, forever hold your peace. Are there any additional items from the commission that would like to be presented? Commissioner Boone?
Funny that you're hearing me speak more tonight than I ever do and I barely have a voice because I've been sick. So I apologize for that. I have a couple of items. The first one being, we have noticed over the last few months that city council has overturned a number of our recommendations. And I am wondering, also a few months ago, we decided to take, to have the minutes be more just smaller. And I'm wondering if that was the right decision. And I feel like this last overturning by the city council maybe did not fully understand the thought and the back and forth that we went through relative to the project because all they had from the minutes were that we rejected the proposal. And I'm wondering if we might want to reconsider that. That's just a comment on a totally different topic. So a few of us went to the Rocky Mountain Land Use Conference that was held in Denver a week and a half ago, which was really good. And many of us ended up in the same room going to the same topics, which is not surprising. But affordable housing was certainly a big topic of this conference. And what was brought up time and time again is that one way to help with that is to rezone single-family lots to allow for duplexes and triplexes. And Commissioner Earl, I believe, brought this up as a discussion topic, which I kind of was expecting to maybe see tonight, but it wasn't here. And I don't want to just let that drop. I know the city of Boulder has adopted it. And it certainly seems like a good way to address the missing middle housing. And I'm hoping that in a meeting very soon, we can address it as well. Because I don't think council will do anything without some recommendation from us on this topic. So, two totally different things and I would appreciate any comments from my fellow commissioners.
Thank you. Commissioner Earl?
So I want to respond to both of those. So Commissioner Boone, thank you for bringing both of those up. On the topic of the minutes, this was not top of my mind, but I thank you for mentioning it. In watching the city council meeting, I believe it was Councilmember Rodriguez, and I apologize if I'm a little bit off in my recollection here, who made a comment that, you know, the minutes were not descriptive of what the discussion was, but that he watched the meeting. No other council member seemed to watch the meeting, but he was relaying that to him. And, you know, he is the liaison, so I respect that role. But I do think it's an interesting discussion that we probably should have around those minutes to make sure that the entire council, you know, gets that context. I was supportive of the shorter minutes. I forget the term. I apologize. But I'm interested in having that discussion at some point in the future. On your separate unrelated topic, I'm glad that that was a topic of conversation. I appreciate the recognition. I'm hopeful that when Director Pendlin gives his update, that it is on a future agenda item, which I trust we'll see in the next couple of months, and I hope that is the case. Thank you.
Commissioner Poland?
In regards to the minutes, I will say this. The recordings are available just as the minutes are available to the city council. Just because we would expand the minutes doesn't mean that city council would take any more time to read the minutes than watching the video. And I do say, I will say that, from what I've seen from the last meeting, last couple of meetings, and also from prior meetings from prior years, that Councilmember Rodriguez has done a very good job in relaying to the city council what occurred in our meetings, whether he was here or whether he watched it on the video afterwards. I'm very appreciative of his input to those discussions and the way that he has relayed the demeanor of our discussions regarding some of the topics. So I don't think it really matters whether or not we do have fuller minutes or not because if they really want to have more information, they would watch the... I think personally, they would probably watch the video rather than try to read through the minutes anyways. So if both are there, they would defer to the video, I believe, and the video is available. So I'm good with just the way it is right now.
So here comes my two cents. In reviewing in reviewing decisions for purposes of considering whether or not matters are to be appealed, a written record is salient, relevant, easily referred to, re-reviewable, invaluable to someone considering whether or not a decision was made appropriately. I also understand that creating such minutes for us is difficult to do, but I do think that it is kind of an invaluable tool. And I maybe agree that there is a cause and effect that we are seeing with, possibly we're seeing, with a shorter action point, which is all we're required to do, presentation of our decisions versus the identification of how we debated and came to the conclusions that we did. Of course, there is always the opportunity to review two hours of hemming and hawing in video. It's difficult to do and it's not as easily available to the review of decision maker, the appellate body. I'll leave it at that. Are there other comments from the commission? Are there other comments in general?
If I can throw my two cents in, Chair Height and members of the commission. I do think, especially for the most recent appeal, that Councilmember Rodriguez did mention he watched the video. I was at that meeting and he did reference that and talk more about the council's decision. I think one thing for the commission to consider in terms of creating maybe a better record or more complete record might be to give direction to staff or myself, not that I hate throwing work at myself, to modify our resolutions. I think that might be a different way of handling the problem. You know, currently our resolution is just say that, at least for Condition A or Resolution A, you know, it met the applicable review criteria under the two sections of code. If the commission wanted to do a review of the review criteria and say, we believe that, you know, review criteria under fifty-five were met, but then, you know, sixty-I-two-A-two subsection-one was not, but the rest were, we could create a more refined resolution process at the meeting. The rules, the code does allow for the commission to give us direction to bring back a resolution next available meeting. So if it's a more complicated issue, that might be something we had to consider. If we're having a fourth Wednesday already, we can bring it back then. It could also be if the commission makes a complete record and authorizes the chair... It could also be if, if the commission makes a complete record and authorizes the chair to sign based. As long as it's consistent with that record and consistent with their findings, we could also just work with the chair directly to have a resolution signed. You know, the next day or something like that. So that's just another thing, something else to consider apart from the minutes. Uh, if you wanted to give us direction to create more robust resolutions, especially when there's denials and saying, you know, what criteria you think was not met. That could be beneficial as well.
Do we have the authority to do that, to postpone our decision announcement until we're, um, able to come up with a. More definitive writing that.
You do.
I never thought we did.
It's the same thing, it's the same action that city council can do. Give me just one moment, um.
We have always announced our decisions. With the gavel. Well, not a gavel.
And of course, as soon as I mentioned, I can't find that code section right away, but you do, um.
Unrelated. Then I'm not letting you talk yet. It's, suffice it to say, we have an opportunity to. More thoroughly refine our decision?
You do. It's in fifteen oh two oh thirty, one of the sections. I know it's in there, um, so I just found it the other day. Um, I can't find the exact code number, but that's something that planning zoning commission could do. Uh, I, I wouldn't necessarily recommend doing it for all situations. I, I'd prefer that commission adopt the review analysis at the meeting and the decision. And then direct the chair to sign it consistent with that finding. If the commission feels comfortable with that approach, I think that's a, a safer approach for us. Uh, just in terms of not delaying an application by another month, just for to get that final written approval.
Okay, well, thank you. Commissioner Earl.
Oh, it's actually Arment.
It's Arment, sorry. I thought it was Earl. I.
To change the subject, um, uh, on Commissioner Boone's point, um, I attended the RML UI as well. Um, and I believe, uh, Commissioner Boone, you were in the ADU's speech, uh, ADU session as well. Um, and there was a interesting presentation from, uh, the city of Boulder, um. On some of the stuff they had done to encourage ADU building. Um, I don't have any, I don't have any specific notes, I don't know. I can't remember specifically what they were talking about, but I do think it's worth noting that there are potential, um. Things other cities in the county are doing to encourage ADU building. I'm not sure exactly what our ADU build rates are like or, um, whatnot. But I thought that might be worth noting.
Anything more? Uh, Commissioner Boone?
With respect to the ADU, um. Seminar that we went to, and I don't know if the city of Longmont even has this, so I may just be, you know, speaking incorrectly. But there are a number of other cities and towns that were there that, um, indicated that they had. What they called an ADU toolkit, which was a publication that you could give to a developer. Or homeowner that had all the, how do I do an ADU items in it? And it was published. Um, Denver has one, Boulder has one. There were.
Grand Junction, I believe. Grand Junction?
Grand Junction has one. So there are a number that are out there that, um. You know, would be a good resource. You don't have to like reinvent the wheel by any means. And I think these other cities would be, you know, really happy to share what they've done. And if this is something that we really would like to, um, encourage. Um, it might be really helpful to the public and to builders and to anybody who's interested in the ADU situation.
Thank you. Others? No? Uh, items from playing Director Penland?
Good evening again. Um, just briefly, as already alluded to, uh, looking ahead. We, uh, are at least tentatively looking at, at least one, potentially two, uh, public hearings for the sixteenth. Regrettably, we won't know until next week, so I can't definitively say that. Um, and as you'll see on this particular slide outline. We had, uh, slated the single-family attached proposal, um, in residential single-family zoning districts. For the second meeting in April, um, as just a work session. So, yes, in, in response, uh, we are planning that. I, I will say that with the caveat. That again, with the unknown of the two public hearings, um, and timing, uh, knowing that at least one of those public hearings. Is most likely going to draw a lot of public interest. Um, we may have to shift those, but again, that's at least tentative. Uh, the other item which was brought up, uh, now it's been a couple of months ago, a few months ago. Uh, drive-throughs and how that might align with envisioned Longmont, et cetera. The reason I, I, I put it on here, uh, obviously kept it on the tentative, uh, agenda looking forward. Was I also wanted to ask the commission, I, I think in the last couple of meetings, I at least gleaned from some conversations. That there may be an interest in expanding that to not only drive-throughs in terms of a broader discussion. But I'll call it potentially a discussion of auto-oriented uses, not just drive-throughs. And so I wanted to at least ask the commission if the narrow scope of drive-through. And I know the, the particular commissioner who brought this topic up is no longer a commissioner. But, uh, understanding that there's still interest, wanted to see if, if the broader topic would be a better approach in terms of the overall discussion.
Commissioner Poland.
I believe what, um, what we had after the transportation plan presentation. Is not only drive-throughs, but. The issue where it is driving versus pedestrian versus biking. And where the city is going with that. And I was, after approving of the transportation plan. What does that mean to us as a commission and what tools do we have in our toolbox to support that plan?
And if I may, uh, through the chair, um, definitely, definitely heard that commentary as well. Um, I think this, this was a carryover from, again, I'll call it a, a land use specific dialogue. That, uh, prior Commissioner Popkin brought up. Um, I think the, the broader land use discussion as it ties with the transportation mobility plan. It is, is again, a very broad topic.
Um, for a separate meeting?
Probably a separate meeting, um, and so just in terms of, I guess, my ask is. I- if we try to keep it narrow in scope in terms of kind of how we got to where we are in relationship to. Land use allowance, um, contemplated in the, the conference planner envisioned Longmont and how that ties with zoning. Uh, again, we were planning on keeping it fair, fairly narrow in scope and talk about drive-throughs. But it seems like there's some interest in, again, maybe expanding that to, I'll call it auto-dominant uses. Still generally looking at kind of how we got to where we're at and how staff has interpreted the comprehensive plan. And how that ties into zoning. Again, we can look at it as a broader discussion. And love to hear, again, overall commission's thoughts on that.
Uh, my sense is the broader, the better. Um, I do though, want to suggest that the public hearings, they can be, especially if one's gonna be contentious. Split and matched with a working session, so a public hearing and a working session, public hearing and working session as opposed to contested public work concessions. Commissioner Armand.
Um, I will say at least, uh, as a newer member to the commission, I think the, uh, you had the suggestion of auto-oriented businesses. And in light of council's decision on the quick trip, I think that may be useful context to have. What the view of auto-oriented businesses in relation to zoning and land use in the state of Longmont is. Thank you.
Thank you. Anything more? Thank you.
Not on that topic. Um, just wanted to look ahead, may, um, again, potential for a URA amendment. Um, and then we have the opportunity, um, if there's a, again, a need to have a working session there. So, uh, to the chairman's point, we may be able to, again, look at that if, again, depending on where. Where the actual, uh, public hearings fall for, uh, land use requests. And that's all I have.
Thank you. Anything else from anybody else?
Very quick, Mr. Chairman, thank you. Um, and just a point of clarification, Grant, this is probably for you. There is not a second March meeting. We are envisioning two April meetings, but there's not going to be the second March meeting that, you know, penciled in next week, correct?
Correct. Thank you. That's all.
Thank you all. Bang, yeah, we'll close.